Howdy, everybody. Today is Tuesday, August 12th, and the time is 6:30 PM. We're here for the regular session of the Coppell City Council. We do have a quorum present, so I'm calling the meeting to order. We will be convening in the work session in the first-floor conference room. The public is invited and encouraged to join us. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everybody. The time's 6:31. We're here for the work session. We have two items on the agenda. The first one is discussion of the agenda items, both consent and regular. Ramesh, did you want to bring up your point?
Yes, Mayor. The agenda number.
It is...
Seven.
Seven.
Yeah. Mayor, I'd like to propose that we table item number seven and have a work discussion maybe the next time.
And...
I have a few questions that I think would benefit that group discussing.
So what questions do you have?
I want to understand other cities that had similar issues by implementing the code of conduct. I want to understand if their code of conduct was similar to ours. I want to understand their code of conduct and see, in spite of that, why they had the liability.
So...
I understand no one's had the liability yet. He had one case.
Question. I want to clarify. Sorry. Are we on eight?
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My number is different again.
Okay. All right. Now, I'm just trying to track it.
That's not bad.
I'm sorry. Mine's labeled seven. It would be eight.
All right. I just wanted to clarify what we went on. Right?
Rules of conduct.
Rules of conduct. So, you know, Plano settled out of court, so there was no finding one way or the other. And I doubt very seriously if the terms of the settlement were made public. I don't know. I know what's different. I'm missing Barbara Lee's presentation, proclamation. That would have been bad.
There was an amended agenda.
Well, my...
Just for the time.
Okay. I'm glad we noticed that, because that would have been embarrassing for me to skip over her.
Didn't mean to interrupt, Mayor, but I just wanted to make sure.
Let's get back to Ramesh.
And I understand that there was no finding of liability, but any financial implication to a city is still an important that I think we should talk a little more about. If there is a method where we can safeguard a city from any financial liability, I'd like to explore more options. So I don't want to solution it today. I'm just hoping that we'll talk a little more in a subsequent work session.
I got it. I'm not sure what we're going to get out of that.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not saying no, but the, you know, anybody can sue you for anything at any time. And the conduct that we have is not set up to prevent that. It's trying to minimize the opportunity. But anybody, I mean, anyone could come in and file a suit against us.
No, go ahead. I want to understand the clarity that you're looking for, so I can...
I mean, I found out very decently, Brianna, that Plano had to settle. And obviously, like Mayor said, we would not know the terms of the settlement. But worst-case scenario, there could be, if Coppell was in the same situation, there could be a financial impact. So I want to understand if they had the same policies that we are recommending today. And if they did, and it was still a liability for them, then I want to see if we can talk more.
Make some changes.
Yes.
Kevin?
This question is kind of directed to Bob. I just want to make sure. But I know that we have talked a lot about the Dallas County Commissioners Court and the legal action that was happening. And there was, you know, a certain case that was...
He sued the county. Federal court.
Yes, he sued the county, and the county won.
Correct.
All right. The rules in the way, or the guidelines that you have written and that are presented to us in the packet, do they align with Dallas County to give us kind of the protections and the precedent that Dallas County had?
Yes.
That's what I'm doing. Thank you.
Thank you. That was my first question, and some of the email did not go out yesterday, so...
That's... Thank you.
Bijan?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. So I was out for a few weeks. Did we discuss this issue in any work session?
We did.
And did we discuss about the, if we pass this, we are subject, could be subject to lawsuits? Because it's a Freedom of Speech Act that we are adding regulations and limitations.
So it's really not a freedom of speech limitation. We're attempting to set a standard of conduct, so it's behavior, not speech.
But it says personally insulting, targeting, or harassing individual members of governing bodies, staff, or persons attending the meeting, which he already reads today.
That's correct. So that's not, I mean, that's still, when you start to attack someone or defame them, then it's no longer covered under freedom of speech. When you, I don't want to give an example, because it would be, you know, crude, but when you go and get that personal with somebody and start to attack them personally or talk about their family in a negative way, then that's not covered as free speech.
Right. When you call out someone's name and then go down that line.
So did we display the examples of the person who came and spoke before us? I know we discussed that on the executive session. We display those comments, one of the slides we had.
You've got to be careful. You might disclose something on executive.
That was executive. That was covered in the executive session.
Okay. So, okay. So since I was not here for the work session, so I'm trying to understand.
So the work session basically presented a draft of essentially what you see here. There were some tweaks that were made by members of the council. Mr. Walker had a couple of recommendations. There was one item that was removed, I believe entirely, if I'm remembering correctly. Would you, Bob, can you kind of...
Yeah. One of the things that Mr. Walker, who's also an attorney, said is it doesn't matter what rules you write, someone can also sue. So what we did is we focused on conduct, because we had the ability to look at the case where one of the speakers that appeared before us sued Dallas County because he was removed for his conduct. And they won that case. And so I used those rules that they had adopted as a basis for our rules. And then there's some other cases where people, remember, this is a limited public forum. It's not a free public forum. Your free speech is subject to reasonable rules and regulations. So if you focus on conduct, we should not have a problem. However, I can't keep someone from suing you. That, I just can't do that. He could sue us if you had no rules, if you didn't like the way you behaved towards yourself. The whole idea was his behavior was the issue. He was paying to the crowd. You know, we wrote rules that he's supposed to address you. That's why he or she is here, just to address you, to not be hateful, not abuse the citizens, not abuse the council, not abuse the staff. And so those are the kinds of things we need to look into. So I believe we're in as good a position as we can be in with regulations if you adopt it.
So Bijan, I would like to add, there were some things in there that you may not have, I don't remember if we covered them. I know we covered them in the work session, but it's been upheld in court that ornaments, costumes, photos, posters are not appropriate, can be banned but not used. Our own representative, Cassandra Hernandez, said that she got censored by the House for taking in photos of a victim that she wanted to show, that they wouldn't even let her show photos of a victim that she was talking about. So we did, we were very sure that those are acceptable as exclusions.
Is this only applies to the city council meeting or all the boards and commissions?
Just the city council. City council.
So rejecting somebody from attending a city council meeting for six months. Can you explain the process?
So that, I believe it says it would be under legal review. So basically, once a person is, it would be after they've been warned, and then they would be removed from the room by the sergeant-at-arms. That's after two warnings, so that doesn't happen immediately. And then it would come under the legal review primarily through our legal counsel.
There would have to be a request by one of you, the way it's written. You would have to request that they be, once they're removed, that night. So if someone come down, didn't behave themselves, under these rules, they were escorted out of the room or asked to leave or stop, and they stopped and left, one of the council members may ask to impose the penalty. And what we would do is we would send them a letter, probably the mayor, my signature, notify them they're appear here, and you get to discuss, as your witnesses, what happened, and ask that they be suspended for a period of time. They can stand there and defend themselves.
And that is...
Or they're suspended, they'll have an opportunity to address you, to address the issue. And that was something you all insisted on.
And that is consistent with what the county and other cities have done? There's nothing here that hasn't been put in place elsewhere. We're not blazing new ground here. Kevin?
Would a vote of the city council be required to enact the penalty?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You would hear their plea, obviously, and watch tape or whatever it turns out to be, and then you would get to see just what the appropriate punishment would be.
Thank you.
Ramesh?
Thank you, Mayor. Is there any way we could find out how much Dallas County spent in fighting that battle?
No, because they have an attorney on staff.
Okay.
They did hire someone else to help with the case. I mean, I could find out if they spent some money.
We have you, but would you also, you don't litigate, right?
Um, yeah.
You do?
Yeah. Some people in my firm litigate as well. We do JML Riscle, or JML Riscle. We don't represent y'all in those cases, because we have a plan for it. So I have litigators in the firm.
So the way it's written is the mayor has the power to terminate the speaking privileges for the person. And if you interpret the way that somebody is emotionally charged and came here speaking before us about a passionate issue, and the reason I'm bringing this up is the city of Coppell is having, but close to forty percent residents are non-U.S.-born residents. They may come up here, their vocabulary and adjectives may not be, is, may be different. Maybe the mayor can misinterpret what that person is saying. But we are bestowing a power to the mayor to kick somebody out.
We've already done that.
I'm talking about after this.
The charter gives me the ability to control the meeting. It specifically gives the presiding officer of the council the responsibility to control the meeting. This is just, this is just giving me some guidelines of what to do and how to do it.
So if you already have the power, then why are we doing this?
Because it, we don't have, all we have is the Texas government code. Was it 4.0, 405 or something like that?
Let me explain. When you have rules, you can read them. If you're a reasonable human being, you have to be able to understand, right? So you're telling people ahead of time, this is what's expected of you when you come down and talk. That's all. And if you disrupt the meeting, you can be removed. If you're ugly and abuse the staff, you abuse you, you abuse the people in attendance, your privileges are taken away.
So the mayor said he already has...
It's just like when you go to school. I have free speech when I go to school, but I just can't stand up and disrupt class, even if I have something profound to say. And I often did, and I was often told to go down to the first floor.
Good example, but mayor saying he already has that power.
He does. He has the power to control the meeting. If my behavior is so egregious, okay? You know what they say? Well, I didn't know, I couldn't do all those things. Yet they are, they're in the rules. If you're not going to have any common sense, then I have to write rules for people that don't have common sense. It's like, it's not okay to drive 100 miles an hour down dead and tap. That's dangerous. But we have to have rules so that someone doesn't take advantage. I think all we're trying to do is codify, so that people, when they come down to see us, know what's expected of them. And then the mayor can gauge that, you can gauge that. Because if Oprah Biden's words were used towards you and critical of you, I would hope that our mayor would protect you. And as anybody on the council itself or in staff, and say, you need to behave. We had rules posted. When you signed up, you agreed to go by those rules, and you're being abusive of council member Matthew. And that's inappropriate. And if you don't stop, I'm going to ask you to sit down. And if you won't sit down, I'm going to ask Byron to take you out of the room, because you're being disruptive and disrespectful. This is your meeting. The public's invited to attend. They're not entitled to hijack it. So that's why we wrote the rules, because we have people apparently think that it's a stage for them to conduct a comedy routine or be abusive. I don't think mayor may, well, and no one has ever had a citizen come down and spoke passionately that we thought that they needed to be removed. That's never happened. So all we're trying to do is codify everyone's conduct. But they're there, you know, just like, we shouldn't go out and punch people in the face. The rules are there to try to guide us.
Okay. Kevin and Bijan?
Bijan, I hear you loud and clear. And I think your concern is if you have a mayor who doesn't understand what's going on and properly interprets in our Roberts rules, any one of us can appeal the decision of the chair. We can appeal his decision. We are allowed to interrupt the mayor to do that. You need a second. We can talk about it, and then we can vote to overrule what he says. So if he does something, or I say he, but the mayor in general is treating people unfairly, he as a council has the power to overrule him. And that is a proper check and balance, in my opinion, that is put in just to make sure that we don't have what, exactly what you described happen. So, but we have that power. All we've got to do is just say, I appeal the decision of the chair. You can interrupt in doing that. So we have that check and balance.
So I want to give a larger perspective on this. I served on the boards and commission for seven years. It's about seven and a half, almost eight years on the city council. That's about fifteen years of serving the city in a different capacity. I attended a lot of meetings, hundreds of meetings. And we had a public, citizens' appearance in all meetings. Maybe two or three people came up and said negative things, rude things, or even racist comments. Just two or three people out of the hundreds of meetings that I came across, we are putting a rule in place, could be subject to lawsuits, for people, Freedom of Speech Act, because they may interpret that we are putting rules so that they won't be able to speak. Or you couldn't interpret, oh, that is a profanity, or whatever the language we are using in the legal terms. And we can terminate their speaking privileges and kick them out for six months. So I have a concern about that. I'm not sure how we're going to resolve this. I'm still thinking.
Yeah?
Does it make sense, I mean, Ramesh has raised issue, Bijan, and I don't think Brianna were even at the session, Jim's not here tonight, does it make sense that we discuss this if there's things to be discussed still?
Yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm good with it. So I, I hear, I, well, let me just, can I speak? As I'm speaking?
Yes. Brianna?
We've been, we've been in a lot of meetings and a lot of situations, and we've been in an executive meeting, so I won't, I won't divulge that, those details where, right, like, we're always at risk of being sued. The city, a council member, somebody does something, somebody says something. So I, I struggle a little bit with the risk of lawsuit, because I think that we know from the past that, right, everybody has a right to do that, right? We have a right as just a person, but we have the right to do that, and we have the right to stand up. I think in this particular situation, we have had a couple of people, right? Bijan, it's not just one, but we've had a couple of people in the past that have teetered on the part of, of being unkind or rude or whatever it might be, or, or maybe even, I don't even know if they've gone to the, maybe they've even defamed, because they've called out people's names. And there has been some situations where, like, some people aren't allowed in certain buildings for certain reasons, because of things that they may have done or things they may have said. So we have imposed some guidelines and rules around behaviors that are not okay, right? To make sure that our staff is protected, we're protected. I think where this situation comes, and again, you're right, Bijan, we do run the risk of being sued, and it could be thousands of dollars. But it's the, it's the fact that it has now crossed a line of where we, where we look at profanity. We talk about disruption of meetings. We're not able to, it causes more than just someone sharing a message where we're saying people have a free of speech, to come and say what they need to say. There is, there's disruption, and it has continued to escalate to the point of people being personally attacked. And I don't think we were, I don't think we, I mean, we didn't run for the money, right? And we were not elected for the money. But I don't know that we were also elected to be personally attacked. And I think there's ways for people to share their message and for them to say what they want to say in a respectful way, because that's what they expect from us, and that's what we would expect from them. So, and again, I think to your point is, this isn't an absolute. If we don't agree, there are other measures. And I think the other thing too, I would say, is things can always be changed. This isn't permanent. Let's try it out, right? If we all, if y'all decide if there's more, you know, hands up and say, we want to defer it, and we want to talk about it more, we can talk about it. Or we can also say, let's try this out, let's see how it works. If it's something that's okay, or we find that we are crossing that line into not allowing people to speak, or whatever it might be, then let's go back to Bob and say, let's do something different. So don't defer it for me. I did miss that meeting. I did miss that discussion. I really wish I had been here for it. And so, right? But at the same time, I think I have enough background for this.
So this will not and cannot be used to keep someone from disagreeing with us. That is not the intent at all.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, disagreement is part of what makes a democracy a democracy. Not everyone's going to agree with everybody. But it's, it's set up to control the behavior on how that is presented. You know, quite honestly, the way that this got started is we all agreed to a code of conduct, that we agree to behave as a council. And it's not unfair to expect people that are coming to talk to us to behave in the same way. We don't all agree with each other. We very seldom all agree. But we do treat each other with respect, and we don't call each other names, and we don't, you know, make other...
Behind your back, we probably make them shut down. Okay. I'm kidding. I'm kidding. No, I...
Hand color, that was...
I'm kidding. I'm just, yeah, I hear you.
Yeah, so...
And I was going to say, Mayor, just real quick too, I think we've also made some changes, even the boards and commissions, because of people who have not followed our code of conduct. And we've ended up having to relook at what that looks like, because if you're on our boards and commissions, you represent us. And if you're on social media doing or saying things that are not okay, then, right, there are consequences to that.
That is correct.
So, yeah. And then I just, one last thing I just want to say, could Bijan, I wanted to make sure I, I hear you. I want you to know that I heard you on this too. My, my mom is, her first language is Spanish, not English. And there are things that she says, there are times that the kids and I have to look at her, and we're like, because it almost sounds like profanity, but it's really not, but it's because of her language. But I think that we all have the ability and opportunity to say, can you clarify what you just said? If we need to, in that situation.
English is my third language.
Yeah.
There are a lot of non, there are a lot of foreign-born people who lives in Coppell. And they come and speak, there won't be an opportunity like what you just said. Can you clarify? He has the ability right now. Hey, I'm giving you a warning for what you just said, one vocabulary or one adjective. Second warning. The third warning is out, right? So I want to make sure that one person is not kicking somebody out of the city council meeting from Coppell, because they misunderstood what that person said. And if, we have three minutes allowed today. This person speak up to two minutes and 55 seconds and said something, and mayor has the ability to kick that person out. I don't know when we can intervene as a council member to object to his or appeal to his ruling. It's done, right? It's out?
No.
No? What do you mean? So I just wanted to understand the timing.
So the way that this would work is I would warn the person that they're not behaving according to our guidelines. And if they then conform, they're welcome to continue speaking. The second time, I would ask them to sit down, that their time has been curtailed. And then if they refuse to remove themselves from the podium or continue speaking, that's when I would ask the sergeant-at-arms to remove them.
Right. Yeah.
So it's not going to be an instantaneous, you're out of here?
No, I understand. You will give them a warning based on the adjectives or sentence or vocabulary they used. That's where my concerns are, right? You know, there are a number of people who lives here, we want to welcome people to the city council meeting and speak up, even if we don't, they don't agree with our decisions, or they don't agree with what we are proposing. They should have the freedom to come and speak on issues.
Well, they're, they're going to continue to have that. We're not, we're not going to be changing any of our citizens' appearance purpose. I mean, the purpose of the citizens' appearance continues to be to allow our citizens to come and speak to us. I mean, the purpose of the citizens' appearance continues to be to allow our citizens to come and speak to us. The, they, they do need to treat us with the same respect that we treat them. Kevin?
We've had a number of people, um, we've had a gentleman who frequent city council meetings, asked us to address this. So we have a citizen that has stepped forward and said, you know, the, the dignity and sanctity of a city council meeting is being violated by some of this behavior. Uh, we also have a couple of people who have spoken to me, person may have spoken to other, um, council members that were present at a meeting where they felt scared because someone was dressed up in a costume, and they didn't understand what that person's intentions were. I think we have just as much of a right to protect the people that attend meetings, people that are here to speak about things that are relevant to the city. We need to have protections for them, just as much as ca- council members, staff. I want people to feel welcome to come to, come to council meetings, just like you do. But we also need to think about the people that are here observing. I also think about, um, while I know we can't be a shield for everyone in the city of Capel, we have a lot of young children that come to our council meetings as well. We have a, a ton of scouts that come in, and it's a, um, a, like a, like a badge requirement.
Oh, yeah.
We, we have our, our high schoolers who come like, uh, from student, Capel Student Media. And I think that we have a right to be able to provide them a safe and welcoming atmosphere to listen to the meeting and learn about what's going on in government, and not be intimidated by the actions of a single person. And right now, we have a system where the mayor does have the ability, you know, he reads the preamble and sets the expectations, but we don't have anything with teeth to be able to enforce that. And this actually gives us enforcement for people that are gonna abuse that, and I'm gonna be the, uh, Bijou, I, I promise you, I'll be the first one. If I disagree with, with a mayor's decision, even to give an initial warning, it's my responsibility to appeal that decision and bring that discussion up, uh, for the council, because even if it's a single, you know, a single warning, and I don't agree with it, it's my right to protect that speaker as well. And it's all of our rights to, to protect that speaker, so. Bijou, I think you have incredibly valid concerns, but I also wanna make sure that we're protecting others as well as those well-intended speakers.
Rajesh?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, i- i- is it possible that dur- during a certain, certain speaker's three-minute time, let's say you've given that person three warnings. Rather than terminating that person from talking at the time, that third warning immediately triggers uh, the city council to, to get together and, and decide if this person should be allowed to come back one more time. So we don't kick them out right away, but we have a discussion on whether that person can come back.
Look, with the rules written, he needs to conduct the meeting, right? So once he's made a decision that they remove, it's unchallenged, and the sergeant-at-arms evicts the person from the room. He's not suspended automatically. He has to come back to you and explain why he behaved that way. Only after one of you requests it, I wanna put this on the agenda for them to be banned from the meeting for two months. It's gotta be, you have to request that. It's not automatic, so. If Mayor Mays removes someone from the room at the next meeting, unless you authorize the mayor to send a letter to them that they're subject to being punished, they can come back the next time.
But you're, you're talking about before that, right?
Right, I, I'm, I'm proposing something that is not covered in this document today. What I'm asking is, is instead of terminating that person, uh, when the, the third warning will, will trigger an automatic review, uh, of the city council in this, on the same day, or the next day, or whenever.
You, you have that right. That, like, when, when you challenge the ruling of the, um, of the chairman, you trigger that conver- you, you have that power based on Robert's Rules of Order. So if you disagree with the warning, if you disagree with the, your speaking time is up, if you disagree with the removal of the sergeant-at-arms, you have that power already, and that would trigger the discussion.
Good point, Kevin. Uh, let me clarify. Let's say I do agree with the reasons. What I'm asking is, is it still possible, that even though I vehemently agree with the mayor that the warnings are correct, we don't terminate the person in the three-minute slot, but we let the person speak, but we control when they can come back next, because they've broken the three warnings.
But that's, now that's what Bob just said, is that he doesn't automatically get suspended. He, like, we, one of us would have to trigger the investig- or the, the-
He's got the right to keep the meeting in order.
Yeah, so-
So once they're removed, they're removed. If, and if, so that the meeting can continue.
And, and if, if any of us, if nobody, if nobody says that we want investigation, they can come back the very next meeting?
Bijou?
Yeah, so we're talking about three minutes here. Disruption of a meeting, maximum three minutes.
Unless I bring my friends, from one follow the other, then we're nine minutes, twelve minutes.
And they dress in costumes?
Yeah, so my, my, the, this is where I'm stuck here. I mean, it's not here, I didn't read anything here. What about city council deciding that person needs to be terminated that day?
I don't understand what you're saying.
So the mayor will give the person warning, first time, second time. And the city council will make a motion whether that person needs to be terminated from speaking that day.
Well, the mayor runs the meeting, that, I, I, I don't think that that's-
So we'd have to vote on it?
Yes.
Well, you challenge, if the mayor says, this is your third warning, and you say point of order, and the mayor says, which point? And you say, I wish to challenge the mayor's ruling, and then you make a motion and challenge the mayor's ruling, or uphold the mayor's ruling, and you vote.
It's also true that any council member can call a point of order and explain their point to the mayor to challenge it. If they, to Bijou's point.
And practically, let's be honest, if someone gets to that stage, do you really want them to hang around and have a debate with all of you? They need to be removed from the room, because, what, do you remember when Dave confronted the speaker? And we almost had a brawl in the back of the room?
Tell us a little.
Yeah. That's, I mean, that's the stage where that guy needed to be, you know, that, that's what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about someone says, well, I, I, I don't think, I think we had to close the park, and I think we had to do a way of Fourth of July, and we spent too much money, uh, buying dinner for the council, whatever they come up and complain about, or express themselves about. I don't think that's the problem. The problem that you have, that I think that you all are addressing, is someone comes down here dressed as Beetlejuice, and wants to sing, and dance, and prance around, and disrupt your meeting. I don't think that anybody has come down here that wasn't passionate about it. You know, we had the lady that was passionate about sidewalks, and she was animated, and she raised her voice. But not, you gave her then two minutes, and she sat down, and she got a little huffy one, one, and went out in the hallway, but that's okay, because people get emotional, but. What I'm concerned about is arbitrary, you treat people different. Yeah, everyone ought to be treated the same, so if I come dressed as Beetlejuice, they'll tell me to go home. Or if I come down, yeah, so, yeah, so. You just don't get to pick and choose who the rules apply to, and that's why we write them down, so that they can be even-handedly applied. That's my intent anyhow. I think that's the council's intent, so that the speaker knows.
Before I say anything, though, could you have your hands up? Okay, I just wanna make sure we weren't passing it. Okay, um, so, I, I would rather have us, have, somebody call executive order in that situation, and come back and have a conversation. The only reason I, I'm gonna put my lawyer hat on for a second, the only reason I would not wanna have a vote is because now you're making this even more personal. You have people voting for or against something, and now talk about opening up Pandora's box to litigation. Not only will, if that person is upset, and they're gonna sue the city, they're gonna sue the city, right? But, and so it's all kind of encompassing, rather than, I, I think that exposes us, is what I was gonna say. That's just a, a legal exposure. We start to do voting for and against. I think that puts us in a bad position.
So, how is that different, mayor telling that person, your privilege is terminated versus a city council saying if four people has to agree?
Because it's a policy. It's a policy that we are following, that we are all aggr- I, assuming everybody votes for it, right? However it is, we have a policy that we're following, and therefore, if this person's upset, so he's, he as the, as the mayor is enforcing the policy, and if they have a legal issue, they have a legal issue towards the policy that we have in place that he has enforced. That's a, it's a, right, so companies either have guidelines or policies, and pol- policies carry a lot more weight, because it, you're, you're treating everyone equally, and they all have to follow that policy.
So you're saying the policy, the mayor can terminate the person, that's a-
He's not do- he's not doing it personally. He's doing it through the budget.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, is the mayor has the ability to terminate the person's speaking rights. That's a policy, right?
If, if we pass this, yeah, great.
My, my, my point is, same policy applies with the four council members' vote.
No, because a policy is a policy that's followed by the city, that means all the city council members are, are, like, whether you're at this table, I'm at this table, not at this table, it, the policy applies to the city. It's not a vote on whether we say yes or no, like, for example, if, if somebody comes and, and personally attacks Ramesh, um, right, then some people on around the table might like Ramesh, not like Ramesh, and it, they're gonna vote accordingly. It's, it's equal and non-biased if we have a policy in place, and we're following that policy, and that we have a policy we can point to, because then if the person is upset, and they do go the litigation route, which I know is a concern, then they have an issue with the policy we, we have in place, and, and they might find that, I don't know, if we were to go to court, they would find that to be, I don't know-
Arbitrary.
Arbitrary, capricious, exactly.
So, on, on the same point, how do you say the mayor doesn't have issue with that person?
That's why you can appeal my ruling.
That's why we can appeal his ruling.
You have, any, each, all seven of you have the ability to appeal my ruling. At any time.
And I think, yeah, it get, I think it gets messy with voting, that's all I was gonna say. I just, I don't, I don't think-
Well, I, I think to Bob's point, we're, we're not talking about people sitting out there behaving themselves. We're talking about screaming and yelling, and, you know, fists flying, or potentially-
Or someone making a pervert move towards mayor, coming at you from the dais. That's conduct. This is conduct-rich, uh, regulations. It's not speech.
And, and I, we might be-
You can say nothing, and get yourself kicked out of the meeting.
And let me just clarify-
By acting externally.
Well, you could, you could hold up a poster.
Right, and let me just clarify one thing to you, I think to Bijou's point, because I think this isn't a, a less maze in the role as mayor. I think it's whoever is in that role, because it could even be, uh, right, whoever's sitting as the mayor pro tem. Um, could be in that position, right, and it's a, it's just a policy in place so that it's not personal.
The policy, well, is the ordinance, and the ordinance is a policy that y'all adopt, and it helps protect us against someone that sues us, because if I tell you what the rules are, and you wanna violate them, there's a consequence. That's all this is, nothing more, nothing less. It's not, I do not look at this as a draconian way to control people from addressing their government, inhering their grievances, and exercising their First Amendment rights. Hopefully, it's more about people that wanna play a rap song on their telephone, or have an inappropriate picture that they're displaying to either you, that may be personally aimed at you, or offensive, someone brings their young child to the meeting, or picks on another element of our community. Those things are, free speech is a, you know, dangerous thing, you know, words can do more harm than guns. But this is a limited forum. This is your business meeting. And people are invited to participate, and come when it's appropriate, but they're not here to take over your meeting. I, I have been coming to the air meetings for forty years, and I've seen some pretty weird stuff. It's gotten weirder lately. But we had some very, I can remember back in the eighties and early nineties, we had some very passionate people come down here. And they rode around the towns and said, fire the city manager on their truck, and they'd come down to the council meeting. That wouldn't you. Some of, some of them have, are deceased now, so I can't even say their name, but I won't. And they, but they came to the council meetings, and they were very vociferous in their grievance with the city. But none of them misbehaved. They dress up like thirteen characters, or come on the schtick, or play loud music, or they did hold up signs when they, but, uh, so. I, I, I think we have a, a community that understands people's First Amendment rights. But we just, I think y'all are tired of meeting, hijack, and certainly don't want anyone to get hurt. Someone could've got hurt that night. Either a citizen or the speaker, because people weren't behaving. And so that's what kind of prompted Mayor Mays to, in my opinion, to champion this cause, is we need rules. But it's your choice. I, I'm not, I'm not advocating for or against them, I'm just telling you what the consequences is, if you had questions. But having rules is a big deal when you go to the courthouse. And the judge in this case said, limited forum, and, and Mr. Stein's case against county gave the jury instruction, you know, limited public forum, reasonable rules. If he violated, then his rights have not been impaired, and they won. So, these are, so, I can't guarantee that we'll win, I can't guarantee that they won't get sued, but as your lawyer, I would advise you to have some rules regarding conduct. I'm not worried about speech, I'm worried about people's conduct. You've been worried about people's conduct.
Bijou?
Yeah, so, Brianna, I just wanted to, uh, clarify. This has nothing to do with who's sitting in the mayor's chair today. My concern is to protect the freedom of speech for the minority, that we always protect the people who come here. We are doing people's business here, and they are welcome at all times, and they should be here. And they should come if they are opposition to some of the things we are doing. They should freely speak here. And we should, we should have a forum for them to feel comfortable to come and speak before us. We don't want any opposition to people. They feel, you know what, that person doesn't like me, so he's gonna kick me out. That person, you know, was my political opponent last election. So these are the things can come up, right? A person can use that tool to kick somebody out. So those are the things I'm concerned about. Bob just mentioned we had numerous issues in the past, right, you said? We never had that rule, even though we had all these problems. This is the first time we are implementing this rule to kick somebody out of the city council meeting. So that's where my concerns are.
And, and, uh, oh, go ahead, I don't think they interrupt you, sorry, Mayor, you're, you have the, you have the floor.
You can speak.
Thank, thank you, thank you. So this is not, this is not about kicking someone out of a meeting. It's controlling their behavior, or setting expectations for their behavior, so that they behave consistent with the way that we expect ourselves to behave.
And then, uh, or Bob, I don't, I don't know that I've, I've ever seen, so we, if we've had issues, I don't know that I've ever seen the behavior. Like, we've always allowed people to speak, but the behavior, the behavior and even some of the spe- speak, uh, some of the words that has been spoken, I guess. Um, but Bijou, to your point, um, I was elected to protect, and to serve, and to represent all of Capel citizens, and the person who continues to come and, um, be, show conduct, and words, and disrupt our meetings, has on multiple occasions not personally attacked me, but attacked races and ethnicities of our citizens. And so it is my job to protect them. And so I- of our citizens, and so it is my job to protect them, and so I will support this, and I will make sure that even if they don't personally attack me, they don't attack the people who live here. And that's my passion side.
You know, I, I don't believe there's anything in this proposed ordinance that restricts free speech in any way, I mean, we're talking about people, um, speaking freely, but also maintaining a level of, um, reasonable behavior, and I believe that the mayor, or any other mayor, would have enough with wisdom and judgment to be able to enforce the policy that we have laid out, and if we feel that it is not being, uh, followed accordingly, uh, we have the wisdom and judgment to basically say to the mayor, "We disagree with you on your judgment," so I think we ought to move forward with the, uh, uh, ordinance as it is written, adopted, um, immediately, and, um, you know, if, down the road, if we, uh, see that there need to be some changes made, then we can, we can make them, but, um, we're not asking for anything unreasonable from someone who wants to address the council, we want everybody in that audience to feel comfortable, and, um, I don't think that, um, these policies inhibit free speech in any, uh, form, fashion, or manner.
Anybody else? So, this will be on the agenda this evening, um, you can move to suspend it, or to postpone it to a future date, if you want to, but that will require a vote, a majority vote of the council to do so, so that's your option on, on that. All right, um, Tracy?
Yes.
You got seven and a half minutes.
I will be brief.
Okay, are we gonna talk about any other thing else on the agenda?
I, I, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem?
I have a question on seven B, it's just a quick one, I don't know if it's just part of our, okay, and it's just a clarification on, in the memo, it refers to, uh, employing strategies, there were two strategies that we, that were presented, there were five strategies presented earlier, and this addresses two of them, one of them is reevaluating vendor services, which, that makes sense?
Right.
The other one says reorganizing roles if vacancies occur to maximize the city's ability to provide the highest standards of financial stewardship, and I was unclear on how that, how approving this is accomplishing that one, so it's just sort of a clarification on that.
So, one really feeds into the other, the, um, staff accountant, eliminating that position of restructuring the financial relationship, root manager, feed into, um, opening up expenditures to be able to look at third parties that can offer value, and this in particular being a revenue generation.
So, are we, is there somebody already internally doing the investment strategy, is that, or are you saying we're just re, re, reassigning some other staff member that was-
So there was no one-
Freeing up somebody to go do the vendor analysis, is that?
Definitely freeing up somebody that was previously purchasing the investments, doing some analysis on it-
Okay.
But it was never their full job, we don't have a treasury department, or a treasury manager, and so having a dedicated third party doing those services to be carried out.
Okay, okay, that's just clarification, I just wanted to understand that.
Okay, anybody, any other agenda items, Bob?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, just saying, uh, Council, uh, Mayor Protem, Carol, uh, recues himself on agenda, uh, as far as since he's a employee of the-
Which item is that?
Not, not, no, I heard something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So the, generally, the way I'll do that is, I'll, I'll say that Councilmember Carol is gonna recuse himself from this item, and you just-
Okay.
Come back here and isolate yourself, and hopefully remember to call you back in.
Okay.
All right, um, Tracy, you've got like five minutes, do we wanna put this off till after the meeting?
That works.
What's that?
That works.
Okay.
Yes. Do you need more than five minutes? No, I'm sorry, kidding.
Well, this is boards and commission, that's-
I know.
That's important stuff.
We have a lot of close stuff.
All right, um, seeing that we are at the end of, well, no, we're, we're gonna recess from work session, and, uh, join the city council at seven thirty, thank you. Well, it got awfully quiet off quick there, we are waiting for Brianna, but before we get started, I wanted to acknowledge a couple of guests that we have tonight, in fact, this is making me very nervous, um, we've got two former mayors, Mayor Andy Brown, oh, come on, and Mayor Mark Wolf over here.
And Candy Sheen.
Oh, and, I'm sorry, and Mayor Sheen, Candy Sheen. I hope you snuck in, 'cause I looked around and tried to find everybody.
Good.
Oh, and, gosh, we have four, wow, this is a record, and Mayor, uh, Mayor Doug Stover.
If they get together, can they overrule you?
The, the question from Kevin is if you guys get together, can you overrule me? I think, I think probably so. Okay, uh, we are assembled, so, um, today is Tuesday, August twelfth, I'm calling the meeting to order, we're here for the regular session of the Capel City Council, um, it is seven thirty-one. Um, just as a reminder, any persons wishing to speak, uh, during our citizens' appearance or public hearings must sign the register located outside the council chambers and list your address. Uh, tonight, we're privileged to have Melody Ranani with the Allies Interface Group here to give our invocation, and then we'll follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance, so please remain standing. Melody?
Thank you. Oh my God, oh my God, unite the hearts of thy servants, and reveal to them thy great purpose, may they follow thy commandments and abide in thy law, help them, oh God, in their endeavor, and grant them strength to serve thee, oh God, lead them not to themselves, but guide their steps by the light of thy knowledge, and cheer their hearts by thy love, verily, thou art their helper and their Lord.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Okay, item number five is a proclamation, and I normally invite the, the visitors to come forward, but I believe we have a few too many people to come forward, so I'd like to ask, uh, Barbara to come forward with her family.
Counsel. Whereas today, we celebrate an extraordinary milestone, the ninetieth year of Barbara Jean Lee, an individual who has lived essentially every day of her life in Capel, and dedicated much of her life to improving this community that we all enjoy today, whereas her family owned farmland in the area at the time of Alexander Gentry's arrival in eighteen fifty-eight, and-
Whereas, and that was until the construction of the DFW Airport in nineteen sixty-nine. Whereas Barbara's early memories included playing at beautiful Grapevine Springs Park, attending the Capel School, now known as Pinkerton Elementary, throughout the eighth grade, and graduating from Carrollton High School in nineteen fifty-three, whereas she married Richard Lee in nineteen fifty-six, to whom she had met while attending the Capel School, raised three children in Capel, and continued the legacy of the Gentry family by faithfully serving at the First Baptist Church of Capel, and whereas her love of reading led her to be designated as the first librarian at the Capel School, while attending the school as an eighth grader, and later was a driving force behind Capel's first library in nineteen seventy-four. Whereas Barbara started the Cancer Society of Capel, was instrumental in leading and supporting foreign missions at the First Baptist Church of Capel, and helped create the Capel Historical Society, serving as its president for many years. Whereas Barbara has dedicated and served the city of Capel and its citizens her entire life, standing as the oldest living Capel native still residing in the city. Now therefore, I, Wes Mays, Mayor of the City of Capel, do hereby declare Tuesday, August twelfth, twenty twenty-five, as Barbara Jean Lee Day in the City of Capel, and call on our citizens to join in the celebration of her ninetieth birthday and the extraordinary contributions as a founding member of our community. In witness there, I have set my hand and cause a seal of the City of Capel to be affixed this twelfth day of August, twenty twenty-five. Congratulations. Now normally, it's traditional for the person to say a few words, but I suspect that the council may have something to say first, uh, council, uh, Mayor Protem?
Well, I will just say that I'm struck by the, the people that are in this room, 'cause you, you know, uh, Mayor introduced a bunch of elected officials, and there's other former city leaders here and everything, but I am struck because we all stand on your shoulders, because you preceded all of us in creating this community that we have all come to love, and, so I think it's remarkable that this, this, everybody that has gathered here today to recognize, to recognize you and what you have meant to this community, uh, over the last ninety years, so just thank you for what you have done, and thank you for every, for your dedication to this community, we all love this community, and I think it is important we know where it all started, and that was with people like you, that we now stand on your shoulders after all these years, so thank you very much for being part of this community for so long.
Counsel? Bijjoo?
Thank you, Mayor, I want to wish Barbara Lee a happy birthday, I had the privilege to attend one of the, Mr. Richard Lee's birthday at his home, and I heard a lot of stories about Capel, and they were fascinating stories, uh, recently, Mayor Mark Wolf also writing about the history, thank you for doing that, we appreciate you putting the stories. I also want to say thank you for all the things that you have done, both of you, I know you served on the school board for a long time, and you built the system that we have here, fire departments, and so on and so forth, so we are, uh, thankful to your service, both of you, thank you very much.
Councilmember Hina Hosa Smith?
Thank you, Mayor, um, it's so good to see both of you, but Barbara, thank you so much, um, for everything that you've done, for truly showing us what public servant leadership means, um, forgiving from just your heart, and just for being who you are, for making Capel your home, and allowing it to be the city that it is, that we have all grown to love, and continue to maintain what it's all about, and just to know, as Mayor Protem mentioned, like, you know, just for you paving the way for this amazing city and this amazing community, and, um, it says a lot, I'm sure there's a lot of people who aren't even able to be here, but look at all the people that are here to just truly celebrate you, and we just say, um, from the bottom of our hearts, just thank you, we, we love you, and we're excited to celebrate you.
Councilmember Prem Kumar?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, Mrs. Lee, uh, about seventeen, eighteen years ago, when I decided to move my family and come live here, I didn't understand that the city is such a wonderful place because of people like you, and everyone else who were living here before that, uh, you are an inspiration to us, and hopefully, we will leave the city in a better place than what we found, thank you.
Councilmember Neville?
Thank you, Mayor, um, happy birthday, uh, thank you so much for gracing us with your presence, we appreciate it so much, um, I just wanted to say that when my family moved here in nineteen ninety-seven, uh, I was still in school- I just wanted to say that when my family moved here in 1997, I was still in school. I think about the vast difference that I had from where I came in Vicksburg, Mississippi, to Capella, Texas. You had sidewalks here, which is fantastic.[612.16][612.16](LAUGHTER). And what that showed me was that Capella was just such an amazing place to grow up. It was such an amazing place that my wife and I decided to come back and raise our family here and establish a business here. And if I can have half the legacy that you have, a quarter of the legacy that you have, I know that we'll have done great things in this community. So thank you for all of you done, all your family has done, and I'm just blown away by the support for you. I'm not surprised, but I'm blown away. But thank you so much for providing us with a community that we can be really proud of, and we promise you that we will do our best to make sure it moves forward into the future and leave it for people, for the next generation. So thank you so much for everything you've done. We are blessed to get to know you. Thank you so much.[657.11][657.11](APPLAUSE).
Did you have anything that you would like to say?[663.48][663.48](LAUGHTER).
I've just always tried to do what I thought was the right thing and to help Capella grow. I love it. We've traveled a lot, but always, it's been such a good time to be on that plane and come down and look out, and I know where my home is. And I'm just thankful. God has been very good to us.
And thank you very much.[712.01][712.01](APPLAUSE). And through your work, I think the Good Lord has blessed us all, so thank you very much. Before we get out of here, there is one other little gift we have, and I thought this was very special, but our library sent you a little gift and a card, and that's from the Capella Public Library in recognition of what you did to start the library in 1974 and serving as librarian in the school. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to take about a five-minute recess to let the room clear out, if anybody wanted to do that. All right, we're going to reconvene into City Council. The time is 7:49 PM. We're on item number six, which is our citizens' appearance. Persons wishing to speak must sign the register and list your address. Presentations of individuals should be limited to three minutes each. Person signed up to speak shall be called in the order that they signed up. No personal attacks by any speaker should be made against any member of the council, mayor, individual, group, or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberations from the City Council due to the Texas Open Meetings Act. We do have one person that has signed up to speak, and that's Ms. Mercedes Hall. Mercedes?
Is this okay? Mercedes Hall, 483 Grace Lane. Okay. Good evening, mayors and members of, good evening, mayor members of the City Council. My name is Mercedes Hall, and I'm honored to serve as the charter president of the newly established Kiwanis Club of Capella, part of the Kiwanis International, a service leadership and fellowship organization dedicated to improving the lives of children worldwide. Our mission is simple but powerful, to serve the children of the world. Through service leadership programs like K Kids in elementary school, Builders Club in middle school, K Club in high school, Circle K in college, even Action Clubs for adults with disabilities, Kiwanis empowers young people at every stage of life, from elementary to school to adulthood, develop leadership skills, build community, and make a difference. Currently, we are at a pivotal moment. Our community has expressed a strong need and desire for service clubs in Capella Independent School District, schools. Capella High School students are eager to charter K Club, supporting their existing service club, giving them access to scholarships and networks internationally. New Tech also have students that have inquired. Principal Latanda Cherry, a member of our club, is principal at Riverchase Elementary, is eager to establish a K Kids. And the CIC board member, Anthony Hill, has encouraged us to help empower middle school students who are often overlooked and lack opportunities to serve, lead, and grow. We cannot achieve this alone. We need the help of passionate leaders in our community, parents, educators, and civic-minded individuals, to make this vision a reality. We are asking for your support to help us identify and recruit the adult leaders needed to help sponsor clubs at the local schools and guide students as they develop into tomorrow's leaders. Kiwanis is more than just a service organization, it's a movement. Imagine the impact we create if every child in Capella has the opportunity to participate in programs that teach them the value of serving others, the importance of leadership, and the joy of fellowship. Firsthand, I can tell you, it saves lives and leaves a lasting, powerful impact. With your help, we can ensure every child has a chance to shine. I'd like to invite everyone here to our next meeting and service project this Thursday, August 14th, at 6:00 to 7:00 PM at Metrocrest Community Church. It will be an opportunity to learn more about our vision, get involved, and make a difference. Follow us on, and find us more on facebook.com/cappelkiwanis. Together, let's build a stronger Capella by empowering our children to serve, lead, and create a brighter future for all of us. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to working with you to make this vision a reality.
Thank you for your comments this evening.
Thank you.
Item number seven is our consent agenda. The consent agenda is routine in nature and is generally enacted in a single motion. These items have been previously approved through the budget or past council actions. Any item may be pulled and considered separately. Full descriptions are available on the screen. Counsel, do you have any items you have any questions about or wish to pull? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion. Mayor Protem Carroll?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve item number seven.
Thank you, and seconded by Councilmember Hina Hosa Smith. All in favor?
Hina Hosa Smith, Carol, Neville, Prem Kamar, Matthew, and Hill, all in favor. Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Item number eight is consider approval of an ordinance of the City of Capella, Texas, amending Chapter 1, Administration, Article 1-10 Rules, Time and Procedures for Conducting City Council Meetings, Section 1-10-6. Order of Business to repeal and replace said section of such article and chapter in its entirety and adding a new section, 1-10-6.3.3, Presentations by Citizens, Providing a Public Comment Decorum During Citizens' Appearance, and Authorizing the Mayor to Sign. Mr. Hager, did you have any comments or questions that you can bring forth?
Mr. Hager just walked around.
He just left us.
I think he's coming here.
Mr. Hager?
Mr. Hager is in the room.
He is here.[1493.51][1493.51](LAUGHTER).
We were calling you forward in case we had any questions for you. Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Hager? We've discussed this item in work sessions and previously. Sorry to call you, apparently no.
No, that's okay. I was anticipating the next agenda item, and so I was going around back to collect Mr. Carroll, so.
All right, any discussion on item number eight? Councilmember Prem Kamar?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I had a lot of time to read through, understand, and then we had pretty good discussion. I completely agree that we do need to give the mayor and the head of these meetings the tools to properly run this meeting. I just have a couple of concerns about any financial liability that the city might incur, so I'm going to be looking forward to a version that I can fully support. Right now, I have a couple of questions that I need the time to research, so that's all I wanted to say.
All right, thank you for your comments. Any other discussion?
Mayor, if I might, explain to those that may be watching at home, as well as the audience, back earlier this year, we've had some incidences at City Council where people were behaving in such a manner as to cause disruption in the meeting. And as a result of that, the council has had some spirited debates about the First Amendment. They've had spirited debates about the conduct and behavior of some of our guests that have come and spoke before us, and there was some concern about protecting the citizens, protecting the staff, and protecting each other as you conduct your business meetings, in which the public is invited to, in some cases, participate and to observe and comment. We have had at least four different sessions with you all, and these are very enjoyable for an old lawyer that gets to watch people talk about the First Amendment. It's one of the first things you learn about in law school. And so these rules are really aimed, not at speech, but at conduct, and it's something that you have the authority by charter to run the meeting and to maintain the order. You have a state statute that has a penal provision in it for people that will not behave and disrupt a public meeting. It is a misdemeanor, and certain cases can be elevated to a felony. But it's also important that you have your own rules, and you and your colleagues have deliberated about this in a very spirited fashion, and like I say, it's been an enjoy to watch. And so these rules are conduct. They were patterned after Dallas County, Dallas County. Those rules were challenged, and the county prevailed over the speaker who sued them. And so we would recommend that you consider these rules as appropriate rules to conduct your meeting, subject to the council's will.
Thank you for your comments and the explanation. Councilmember Matthew?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a few points here on this item. Freedom of speech is not just the right to speak our minds, it is the right to question, to challenge, to express ideas that may be unpopular or uncomfortable. It allows voice to rise, moments to grow, and the truth to come to light. But this freedom is not guaranteed unless we protect it. It can be eroded slowly by censorship, fear, or belief that only certain opinions deserve to be heard. We must remember, the true test of free speech is not whether we protect the voice we agree with, but whether we protect the ones we don't. Protecting freedom of speech means standing up for open dialogue, respectful disagreement, and the belief that ideas must compete in open, not be silenced in the dark. The way the rules are written today, I'm not in favor of it. I hope in future versions, may can be modified, that I can be supported. Thank you.
Counsel, do I have a motion? Councilmember Neville?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve Agenda Item 8 as stated.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember Hina Hosa Smith, is there any discussion on this? Councilmember Hina Jose Smith, is there any discussion on this? Councilmember Neves?
Thank you, mayor. I, uh, I know that this is a very sensitive topic for people. I 100% agree with Councilmember Matthew about protecting people's free speech. I would invite anyone who has concerns about this to read the content of the proposed ordinance, and know that I am 100% in favor of supporting people's free speech. But what I'm not in favor of is people who come in and sling personal attacks towards elected officials, staff members, citizens and residents who are here to observe the meetings. I think it is our responsibility to protect everyone as well. And as our city attorney said, we need to protect the speech, but we also need to be aware of the behavior. And unfortunately, we have witnessed months of what I would consider incredibly inappropriate behavior. I was targeted personally as a, as a subject of a personal attack from a speaker, and, you know, I, I'm very sensitive to this topic. Other people have been made targets as well. I think it's my responsibility to make sure I protect them as well. There were questions about giving the mayor, or the chairman of the meeting, or the presiding officer of the meeting, power to be able to silence anyone. I want to reassure everyone that any decision that the mayor makes can be challenged by any member of this, of this council, and we will follow Roberts Rules of Order to determine if the mayor's ruling, or the presiding officer's ruling, is fair and just. And I think that that's what we're elected to do, is have a level head and make sure that all of us are looking at things from a balanced perspective. So I'm very much in support of this because I think it's fair that we protect everyone, not just speakers, I want to protect speakers, but everyone that is involved in the meeting.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilmember Prem Kumar?
Thank you, mayor. Councilmember Neves, I completely agree with what you said. I think that personal attack against him is completely abhorrent. I think every one of us should be against that. And I agree with what Councilmember Neves said. As I read what is being proposed here, it is only to govern rules over conduct, not the content. So I 100% agree that this has nothing to do with restricting anyone's freedom of speech. Having said that, you know, the two very difficult choices that I see here is, on one hand, we could sit here and then take the abuse for three minutes and not cause a financial liability for the city, or we could try to enforce these rules of conduct in good faith and then open us up for an impossibility of a lawsuit. That's the struggle that I'm having to deal with. And, you know, if I have to listen to three minutes of hate speech, I'm okay with that. That's, that's where I'm coming from. But, but I completely agree with what Councilmember Neves said, and I support what he said. Thank you.
So I'm going to weigh in a little bit. As the presiding officer mayor, I am granted the responsibility by our charter to control the meeting. The only control that I have is relying on a state rule that says if a, if a person, including the city council, is disruptive of a meeting, then I can have them removed. That is really all that it gives me the authority to do. So in my view, this is giving us a little bit of latitude to try to calm the situation down before we get to that point. So I appreciate the comments. This has been discussed and multiple times, and I appreciate all the honest discussion that we've had, and I think we understand where we, I think we understand our situation much, much better than we did even six months ago. We do have a motion and a second. Seeing no further discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor?
Hina Jose Smith, Carroll, Neves, oh, I apologize. Hina Jose Smith, Neves, and Hill in favor. Those opposed? Carroll, Prem Kumar, and Matthew. Motion fails.
It's a tie. So I get to vote in this case, and I vote in favor.
So it passes 4-3. Mayor only votes in case of a tie. There was a tie, 3 to 3. Mayor gets to break the tie.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to item number nine. This is, consider a resolution designating Frost Bank as a city depository over a period of five years and authorizing the mayor to sign. Councilmember, or Mayor Pro Tem Carroll is recusing himself from this discussion.
I'll wait till he's out of the room. Sad he hasn't missed it, but that's okay. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Vanessa Tarver, and I'm the Assistant Director of Strategic Financial Engagement. The item before you is for your consideration for S F V's recommendation for Frost Bank to be the next depository service for the city for a five-year term, beginning November of 2025 and ending in November of 2030. Now, a little technical detail, from our posting site, BitNet Direct, there were four banks that had viewed it, and due to the restrictive nature of Texas legislation in regards to what banks can do businesses with cities, only two were really eligible. And from those two, only one had submitted a proposal, and that was Frost Bank. And from our review of said proposal, it was only a 5% increase in fees from our original 2020 proposal going into 25. And more on the relationship side of things, so we have been with Frost Bank since 1995. It's an almost 30-year relationship where we've been able to really collaborate with each other, have a great partnership. And when I think of just one instance of even customer service, so during the outage, we took everything offline, and I would go directly to the bank and do all of my service. And I'm sure they don't see that kind of thing anymore from like a business or a governmental entity, and they were so happy to help me and to make sure that we were taken care of during that difficult time. And even more so, the accountants that we have know the tellers, and they love working with them. It's a really great relationship, and with all those things combined, I believe that Frost will continue to be a great partner to the city. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council, do you have any questions for Vanessa? Councilmember Neves?
Thank you, mayor. Just a quick question. So the 5% increase that you spoke of, is that pretty standard? I know I may be asking for some historical information there, but is that, is that pretty like a standard increase over a five-year contract, or is that close to what we've done historically?
So it looks like from the 2015 to the 2020, there was an 18% decrease in fee, and that might have just been the way that the services we were using at that time versus the services this time, as the fees are based off of the actual usage.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Councilmember Matthew?
Thank you, mayor. Excuse me, question for you. How much fees did we pay to Frost Bank last year?
So I have the quarter of this year, and I apologize for not having that specific number, but for the quarter going from March to May of this year, we paid 39, or we paid $5,700 in fees. So we pay roughly around $1,800 to $1,900 in fees a month.
So 5% increase from $19,000. Is it 5% every year for the next five years? Or every year, 5%? Then the next year will be another 5%?
So the fees that we received were directly for what we're going to be the proposal for this term. I will have to double-check on that to see if there are incremental fees, but I did not read that in the contract.
Okay. I understand from your memo, only one bank submitted the proposal.
Correct.
What is so restrictive that nobody else want to submit a proposal to us?
Well, from the four that viewed, two could not, because a bank has to have a main branch or a main office in the state of Texas to be able to submit. So that took two of them out of the running. From the one that viewed and didn't submit, I, it's only speculation as to why they didn't. They are quite smaller than Frost Bank, so that might have something to do with it.
I mean, we do have big banks, like Capital Bank, Capital One, Bank of America, and other banks. They are not eligible to submit?
They are eligible to submit. They have a listing of banks that are like the top 100 banks in the state of Texas. So technically, all of these are able to submit. One thing about city government that's kind of unique is we're required to have collateral on all of our bank deposits above $250,000, and that's quite a financial burden for a lot of banks to hold the collateral that we need for the cash that we have in our bank. And so that's potentially a reason, is they don't want to have that burden on them to have that collateral on our behalf.
Since we've been doing business with them since 95, how do we know what other banks charge for city operations in other cities for a comparison purpose?
I'm not too sure of that. I can do some research to see what I can find and get that information to you on what I can see the most recent RFPs and responses were.
Thank you.
Councilmember Prem Kumar?
Thank you, mayor. This is actually a general question. So for my personal account, banks are FDIC, is it the same for city deposits?
That is correct. So we'll, we have that same $250,000.
It's only $250,000?
Yes, for the FDIC insurances, $250,000, and that's why we purchase collateral, to make sure the rest of our funds stay safe in case of any type of bank emergency.
Okay, thank you.
Council, any other questions? Councilmember Neves?
Thank you, mayor. I move to approve agenda item nine.
Seconded by Councilmember Hill, all in favor?
Hina Jose Smith, Neves, Prem Kumar, Matthew Hill, all in favor. Motion passes.
Thank you. Oh, yes. While Ms. Tien is coming down, we're going to get the mayor Pro Tem back. Kim, would you read item number 10 into the record for me, please?
I will. So consider approval of a maximum proposed tax rate of .444976 for the 2025 tax year, and to set the public hearing on the budget and proposed tax rate for the regularly scheduled city council meeting on August 26, 2025, at 7:30 p.m. Good evening, mayor and council. The, this agenda item requests council's consideration of approval of a maximum tax rate for the 2025 tax year, which is the 2526 fiscal year. The item is proposing a maximum tax rate of .44976 cents. This is a record vote, which is required by Texas Tax Code, Section 26.06, regardless of the tax rate being proposed. The record vote is required to be included in the notice of public hearing to vote on the tax rate publication, which must occur at least five days prior to the public hearing date. This notice will be published on August 16 in The Rambler and on August 15 in The Gazette. The public hearing and meeting to adopt the budget and tax rate is scheduled for August 26. This item, again, is not a vote to adopt the tax rate, it's only a vote to publicize the tax rate, the maximum tax rate, which will not exceed .444976. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions? Councilmember Neves?
Thank you, mayor. Ms. Tien, question for you. I heard you say that you were going to publish the notice in The Rambler as well as The Gazette. The Rambler is our official newspaper, I don't know what the official term is, but it's our official newspaper, correct?
Correct. It is our paper of record.
Paper of record, thank you. That's the word I was looking for. Why the addition to, for The Gazette?
So we post in both papers that serve the community, so that as many community members see it.
So we're not required to publish it in The Gazette, but we're trying to get as much, as many eyes on as possible?
That is correct.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Prem Kumar?
Thank you, mayor. Ms. Tien, and thank you, and for your entire team, for the wonderful work. I just want to take this time to talk to people who are probably listening in. You know, this year, like I'm sure previous years, it was a tough decision for all of us to make. On one hand, the inflation and CPI has been driving more than 4% increase in expenses. So even if, if you tried to deliver all of the services that the city provides to the citizens, at 4% inflation, the actual rate was going to be higher than what is being shown here. The city staff, to their credit, have tried to see that we need to reduce the cost of delivering the same value of services. So they've actually proposed about 7.5 heads decrease in this budget. So they are committing to deliver the same services that they've been providing the last few years at a lower cost, is how I see it. So to that, I give you a lot of credit. And also, for people who are watching, please understand that there's something called the Austin Gap. So even if we continue to take only the 3.499 of the MNO, the budget that we will have will be below the expenses for the, for the next five to seven years. And the city staff are committed to delivering the same services that you are getting today, and they're trying to do that through technology and automation. So I think the staff deserves a lot of credit. For those that complain that this tax rate is too high, please understand that we're trying to deliver the same level of services at a lower cost. Thank you.
Councilmember Hina Jose Smith?
Thank you, mayor. I actually just wanted to say thank you to you and your staff for all the work and the time and the effort and the commitment that y'all put into this entire process, and the fact that you guys come just so prepared for all our questions that come in every direction possible, and with alternatives to things that we might be thinking about, and just being 10 steps ahead of us sometimes. So anyway, I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Matthew?
Thank you, mayor. I also want to echo that. Thank you for your hard work and your entire staff. The tax rate that you have in your memo is .444976. What was the approved tax rate from last year's budget?
So last year's tax rate was .458632.
Okay. This tax rate is with the understanding 3.499 percentage will be increased, right?
So it's not the tax rate that is increased, the 3.499, it's the revenue.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem Carroll?
Thank you, mayor. I was going to move to approve item number 10.
Go right ahead.
I move to approve item number 10.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilmember Neves, all in favor?
Hina Jose Smith, Carroll, Neves, Prem Kumar, Matthew, and Hill, all in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number 11 is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing, and this is to receive public comment on the proposed 2526 budget for the Capella Crime Control and Prevention District. Ms. Tien?
Yes. Thank you, mayor and council. Again, this evening, we are holding the public hearing on the Crime Control and Prevention District Fiscal Year 26 Proposed Budget that council is required to hold as the governing body. Specifically, Chapter 363 of the Local Government Code states that the governing body that created the Crime Control Prevention District shall hold a public hearing on the budget adopted by the Crime Control Board. The Crime Control Board, which is made up of the seven voting members of the city council, did hold a public hearing on June 23 of 2025. No citizens signed up to speak. The public hearing was closed, and the board approved the proposed budget with one change. Staff was directed to remove the reimbursement by the Capella Independent School District for the SRO program. And so before I present the Crime Control Fiscal Year 26 Proposed Budget, I did want to provide some background to you. First, the Crime Control and Prevention District is a special-purpose tax district created and governed by Texas Local Government Code 363. It's designed to provide crime prevention programs and services to the community. Funding for the district is through the one-quarter of 1% sales tax that was approved by voters. Next, as a special-purpose district, the Crime Control and Prevention District is authorized only if the district and the sales tax are approved by a majority of the qualified voters. The sales tax for CCPD was originally passed in November of 2007, and sales tax collect- The sales tax for CCPD was originally passed in November of 2007, and sales tax collection began in April of 2008. The initial authorized period was for five years, which would have expired in 2013, but then in November of 2011, the sales tax was reauthorized for a 10-year period this time with a new expiration date of 2023. The 1/4 of 1% sales tax for crime reduction programs was once again reauthorized for another 10-year period by voters in November of 2022. So the reauthorization now expires in 2033, and the next time this will come to a vote is in November of 2032. And actually, the last time, let me see, the sales tax is restricted or committed to expenditures for a specific purpose, and because of that, we do show it in the city's financial statements and in their budget as a special revenue fund. So now that you have some background, I will share with you the proposed budget. So I'm going to begin just with a few highlights. This slide shows the revenues and expenditures of the Crime Control and Prevention District. First, I'd just like to share that the sales tax is continuing to be budgeted as if the rule 3.334 is in effect. The budget, as I mentioned, includes the cost of the SROs with no reimbursement from the school district, and the budget continues the joint venture with neighboring cities to effectively and efficiently provide for E-911 and jail services. And I'll point out where these areas are impacted in the items shown on this slide as I walk through the proposed budget. So beginning with revenues, which is the graph on the left, the total Crime Control and Prevention Budget revenues is about $4.3 million for the next fiscal year. Sales tax, which is the blue area of the chart, is the primary source of revenues for this fund and is estimated at about $4.1 million or about 97% of total revenues of the fund. So as I mentioned, sales tax revenue is budgeted as if the rule is in effect, but it also includes a 5% increase over the original budget from last year. And we do that because we are anticipating more collections as a result of higher costs in the items that businesses are selling. And so that leaves the remaining revenue as interest income, and that makes up about 3% of total revenues. So moving on to expenditures, which is the graph on the right, total Crime Control and Prevention District expenditures are projected to be about $4.4 million for the next fiscal year. Expenditures include about $2.2 million for salary and benefits, and that is related to 14 SROs and one administrative compliance officer. And then the services category, which is the next largest category, which is represented by the gray area of the chart on the right, totals about $1.9 million or about 43% of the total expenditure budget. This fiscal year, the 2026 proposed budget includes payments to the North Texas Emergency Communication Center for the E-911 dispatch services, and this is that joint venture with the cities of Carrollton, Farmers Branch, and Addison. It also includes services that were continuing the contract with the city of Grapevine to provide the jail service. And these are just two examples of cities working together to be good stewards of public funds through collaboration and sharing of the cost of these services. The services area also includes a reimbursement to the general fund for what we refer to as administrative services. The administrative services is to reimburse the general fund for services that are rendered by employees that are paid out of the general fund. For example, the Crime Control and Prevention District does not staff an HR staff. It doesn't have legal. It doesn't have an IT department, accounts payable. And so instead, it reimburses the general fund for those services. And then the last category that I'd like to mention is the transfer out category, and that's represented by the green slice of the pie, and it constitutes about $153,000 or 3% of the overall expenditures. And this transfer is a transfer to the capital replacement fund for one year of useful life of the vehicles that are utilized by the SROs. And so in summary, the proposed budget, budgeted revenues for fiscal year 25 are estimated at about $4.3 million, and the expenditures are almost $4.4 million. And so this is the overview of the Crime Control and Prevention District proposed budget for fiscal year 2526. The agenda item is the public hearing for the 2526 proposed budget for the Crime Control and Prevention District, which the governing body that created the district is required by Chapter 363 of the Local Government Code to hold. The actual adoption of this budget again will occur with the adoption of the entire city budget, which is scheduled for your consideration of approval on August 26. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and Chief Barton is also here to help me.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. We did not have any citizens signed up to speak. So counsel, do you have any questions for Ms. Tien or Chief Barton? Councilmember Matthew?
Sorry. Thank you, Mayor. Are we paying all the SRO salaries and benefits from CCPD account?
Yes.
And how many are there?
14.
Okay. What is the total cost?
The total budgeted cost is the $2.2 million.
Okay. The school was reimbursing us, but this year we are deciding, we are waiving that, so we are going to help out the school district by city picking up the full cost, which is the $2.2, correct?
Can I interject a bit more information? So the $2.2, and Chief, you can help me. The SROs don't only perform duties at the campuses. When the schools are closed, they're also performing other duties for the city, correct? So the $2.2, we are paying for those 14 people out of CCPD, but the school district would not pay half of that to us. They would only reimburse if you were asking them for 50% of the salaries paid for when they were working for the school.
Yeah.
I just want to clarify that.
Thank you for the clarification, and I support it.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I will accept a motion. Mayor Pro Tem Carroll?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to close the public hearing and approve item number 11.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Prem Kamar. All in favor?
Hina Hosa Smith, Carroll, Neves, Prem Kamar, Matthew, and Hill, all in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you next time.
Okay. Next week.
Item number 12 is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing and ask Mr. Steer to read that into the record.
Mayor, counsel, good evening. This is item number 12 this evening. It is a public hearing to consider approval of S1269 LI, a special use permit to allow an indoor commercial amusement use in an office building located 1199 South Beltline Road, Suite 160, at the northwest corner of Wrangler and South Beltline at the request of Christopher Merrill Golf Track Cappell. In 1998, city council approved the site plan for this 104,000 square foot building. The current request is in the northwest corner of the building, Suite 160. This is a special use permit request for an indoor commercial amusement use within an office building that's zoned light industrial. As described by the applicant, Golf Track is a membership-based indoor golf training and performance facility. The facility is equipped with advanced simulators, swing analysis tools, and a custom short game area for individual and group practice. Their primary goal is to create an optimized environment for golfers to improve their game year-round. The proposed hours of operation for private members with security access extend from 5:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., and for non-members, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. by appointment. The floor plan shows the proposed layout of the space with six to seven bays devoted to the golf simulators, an office, a water station, restrooms, a lounge, a teaching area, and club fitting area, and an area in the middle for short game practice. A parking analysis has been submitted. The current and proposed tenants, their areas, uses, and the parking required are outlined in the chart. There are currently a total of 370 parking spaces required and 371 parking spaces provided on-site. This demonstrates that there will be sufficient parking to accommodate the proposed use. The various uses within the building have different parking needs, ranging from one parking space per 300 square feet for professional office and one parking space per 175 square feet, or per 175 square feet for medical office users, and the proposed use requires one parking space per 100 square feet. We sent out three letters within 200 feet as required by state law, six within 800 feet as a courtesy, and we didn't receive any responses in favor or opposition. Planning and zoning commission unanimously recommended approval of S1269 LI with no outstanding conditions. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is in the audience as well.
Thank you very much. We did not have anybody signed up to speak for this one?
Sorry. Sorry, this is a public hearing, but we did not have anybody signed up to speak. So counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Steer or the applicant? Councilmember Hina Hosa Smith?
Thank you. Mr. Steer, can you go back in the very beginning to the list of what will be inside, like in the very beginning? Maybe there. Because I thought you mentioned, oh, so teaching, club fitting area, okay. Just so that I am clear, what does the lounge entail? Like, is there food here, or is it only a facility for golfing? Or can you help me understand just kind of the...
Yeah, I'd let the applicant answer that question.
Okay, I'm just curious. Thank you. And in that same question, I'd love to know if there's other facilities like this.
For the record, my name is Chris Merrill. I live at 351 Westlake Drive, Cappell, Texas.
Thank you.
To answer your question, so the teaching lounge area is more of like, it's the entrance door, right? It's a seating area that will have two TVs. The bays, as you see, six bays. The teaching and club fitting bay is actually a bay as well, but it has a little more space so a PGA teaching professional can teach in that arena. So no, it's not food serviced. That's why the hours operate from 5:00 to midnight, much like what a gym would. That way, before and after work, you can come and go to the facility. And it is a membership-based model, and so that way, that's why the hours are constructed the way they are.
Thank you. And the other question I had is, do you have any other facilities like this?
So it's a franchise model, so yes, there is. There's currently three or two active in Kansas City, which is where Golf Track was founded. There are now 16 other franchises sold across the United States, and the one here in Cappell is one of them that are in, you know, once approved will move to construction.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Any other questions?
That's mine to say. Any other questions, counsel? Thank you very much. This was, this one just came across our email. It was like, wow. So thank you very much for reaching for it.
Yes, Mayor, and hopefully it can serve, you know, Cappell doesn't, only has but one golf course, and so hopefully it can serve a rapidly growing market.
All right. Counsel, any other questions? Seeing none, I will accept a motion. Councilmember Neves?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to close the public hearing and approve Agenda Item 12 as presented.
Seconded by Councilmember Prem Kamar. All in favor?
Hina Hosa Smith, Carroll, Neves, Prem Kamar, Matthew, and Hill, all in favor, none opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number 13 is a public hearing. So she's already up here. I will open the public hearing and ask Ms. Peron Boswell to read it into the record.
Item number 13 is a public hearing. Consider approval of PD 198 SF7 for Lot 23A to remove commercial district zoning and special use permit from the rear portion of the lot previously used as parking for the Dicky's Barbecue Restaurant on Point 35 acres of land located at 804 Bullock Drive at the request of the property owner Mohammed Jafar Hanif. So good evening, Mayor and Council. The property that is being rezoned is the one outlined in yellow on the screen. It's Lot 23A within the North Lake Estates subdivision. It is one lot, but it has two zonings on it. It's residential in the front, outlined in yellow, and commercial in the back with the red. Previously, there was a house on the lot that was destroyed by a fire, and this lot has sat vacant ever since. So how did it become commercial in the back? Well, good question. In 1999, Dicky's Barbecue Restaurant was approved to be constructed on the property adjacent to the east along the west side of Denton Tap Road. Their onsite parking does satisfy ordinance requirements. During that time, both the residential lot on Bullock and the Dicky's lot were owned by the same entity. In 2000, an SGP was approved to add additional overflow parking along the backside of 804 Bullock, the property outlined in red. The property was paved. Additional parking spaces were added to serve the restaurant with the parking agreement. The lot on Bullock was sold to the current owner in 2023, and the Dicky's lot changed hands in 2021. According to the applicant who owns the lot on Bullock, the shared parking agreement is no longer in place. So the purpose of this request is to rezone the entire lot back to the base zoning SF7 in a PD to allow for new residents to be constructed and convert the overflow parking area back into a backyard space. Mr. Hanif, the current property owner of 804 Bullock, would like to construct a house on the property for his family to live in. As it relates to land use, the request for the single family is in keeping with the adjacent properties on Bullock Drive. As part of the changes, Mr. Hanif plans to demolish the existing paved parking area at the rear of the lot and will install a six-foot in height wooden fence along his property boundary, including adjacent to the commercially zoned property. The wood fence in this area is in lieu of a masonry wall, which is typically required between commercial and residential zoning. This fence is typically constructed by the commercial owner to provide privacy for the residential lot. Staff is in favor of this requested exception. The applicant will need to get a building permit to construct a house on the property. Again, because this is a zoning change request, we did send out letters, 19 within 200 feet as required by state law, another 88 as a courtesy. We did not receive any written responses. We did have one of the neighbors show up to the planning and zoning meeting with questions about the development, and they were ultimately in favor of a home being constructed there. So the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval of the request subject to the following conditions. One, that there may be additional comments during detailed building review. Two, PD conditions, A, to approve the wood fence in lieu of the brick wall adjacent to the commercially zoned property; B, to require the existing paved parking lot to be demolished prior to building, prior to a building permit being issued. That is the end of my presentation. Available for questions, and the applicant is here as well.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, but no one signed up to speak. So counsel, do you have any questions? Councilmember Neves?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question about the rationale of the wood fence versus the masonry fence. Could you give me a little bit more detail or background about why that condition was added?
Sure. So that is one of the, I guess, exceptions that they're asking for. Typically, the masonry wall is put in place when the commercial development happens. In this instance, you know, and typically it's there to protect the residential owner from the commercial activities. In this instance, the house is coming in after the fact, and so they are requesting an exception to not have to bear that cost to put in the wall, because we can't go back to the commercial property owner and say, hey, can you put in a wall?
All right. Thank you for that background. Thank you for that background. I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Counsel member Prem Kumar.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a follow-up on counsel member Neves' question. So, whether it's eleven years ago or twenty years ago, Dicky's would have had to put a masonry wall there, correct?
Yes, but they obviously went through the PD process to put in the parking lot at the rear, which necessitated leaving that open so that they could have the parking area.
I don't like it, but...
Any other question? Counsel, counsel member Matthew.
Yeah, thank you. I'm a little confused here. There is an existing house on eight oh four, right?
No.
No.
There was a house. It burned down, and it's been vacant ever since. So, he would like to come back and build a house on that lot.
Okay. And the rear side of the property is the commercial area. That is going to be demolished to make it a larger plot to build one single-family house.
Right. So, it's all one lot currently. It's just that the back half was rezoned to allow for overflow parking for the Dicky's. So, the Dicky's actually has enough parking per ordinance to, to cover all their parking needs. The owner of this property, he owns the whole thing, but now would like to build a house on it. And so, he would, he's asking to rezone that back portion back to residential to allow him to use the entire property.
Yeah, I got confused because the owner and applicant lives in Irving, Texas.
Correct, but he owns this lot and would like to build a house.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion. Counsel member Prem Kumar.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to close public hearing thirteen along with the conditions stipulated by P N Z.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Second about counsel member Matthew. All in favor?
Hannah Jose Smith, Carol Neves, Prem Kumar, Matthew Ann Hill, all in favor. Motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, item number fourteen is the city manager reports with project updates, future agendas, and direction for work session.
Thank you, Mayor. Have a few things to announce today. So, the public hearings on the budget and tax rate, along with the vote on the budget and the tax rate, will be considered at the next city council meeting on August twenty-sixth. If you are unable to attend but have budget-related questions or comments, please email us at budgetinput@cappeltx.gov. Our Vision 2040 refresh process, the engagement process for that project is underway now. This is our citywide effort to gather community input and ensure that our long-term strategic plan continues to reflect the community's values, needs, and aspirations. There are multiple opportunities for you to participate. You can visit the refresh website to complete a short survey or add your thoughts to the idea wall. Those who complete the survey are eligible to pick up a free Coppell t-shirt. You can host your own meeting with your own neighborhood or network with our new engagement opportunity, which is called Meeting in a Box. You can pick up all the materials to host that meeting at Town Center, the Cosby Library, and Life Safety Park. I've got a couple project updates, so Veterans Plaza, located just in the back here of Town Center. The contractor is currently working on their electrical and irrigation work. For the dog park, the contractor has completed the demolition and are currently constructing the perimeter fence and have begun the grading work for that project. The traffic signal at Freeport and Northwestern, which is a long-awaited traffic signal installation, the poles and the mast arms have been installed, and we will complete that installation starting next week. Magnolia Park Trail, the contractor is working to finish pouring the trail by the end of this week and will begin building the fence thereafter. And finally, the Woodridge Channel, this project is to repair the erosion in the channel in front of Saint Joseph's Village along Sandy Lake, and the contractor will begin work on that project next week. That concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Item number fifteen is the mayor and council reports on recent and upcoming events. The, our boards and commissions' application process is underway. Please participate in our local government and give back to the community by serving on one of our boards or commissions. The city is seeking passionate individuals to be part of these boards and commissions that help guide development, future needs, regulations, and more, all for Coppell. Applications are now open. More information is available on the city's website and social media. Just as a reminder, school starts tomorrow. A friendly reminder to our community, please be cautious and slow down in active school zones and be mindful of the increase in both pedestrian and vehicular traffic. We wish our educators, students, and parents the best of luck as they work toward another successful school year. All right, item number sixteen are public service announcements concerning items of community interest with no council action or deliberation. Do we have any public service announcements? Counsel member Neves.
Sorry, Mayor, you've been calling my name a lot tonight. Just a couple of public service announcements. Counsel had previously approved a safety rail for Denton Tap Road near Parkway on the northeast side of that intersection, where the sidewalk is directly adjacent to the curb. I got an update from the city manager's office that even though that rail will not be ready at the start of school tomorrow, it should be installed by the beginning of September. So, I just wanted to let parents know that may have any questions about that, that that rail is coming, so. And then two other Coppell ISD updates, I think are relevant. Last night, Coppell ISD Board of Trustees voted to close the New Tech campus and move the New Tech program as a separate school-within-a-school concept over to the main Coppell High School campus. So, work will begin to, to get underway on, on that as soon as possible. And then just another note that there are some public meetings that are scheduled in the month of August to discuss potential closure of one or two Coppell ISD campuses. There is a series of five meetings at, at five specific campuses. I want to share those. Lakeside Elementary is on Thursday. Cottonwood Creek is going to be on August eighteenth. Mockingbird Elementary is going to be August twentieth. Austin Elementary is going to be August twenty-first, and Town Center Elementary is going to be August twenty-eighth. All of those meetings will start at five thirty at those campuses. So, just wanted to make sure that everyone is aware of what's going on with Coppell ISD. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody, any other public service announcements? Seeing none, we are going to recess from the regular session of the Coppell City Council and reconvene into work session in the first-floor conference room so that Ms. Leach can educate us about our boards and commission selection process. The public is welcome to join us. All right, we have a quorum presence, so we're going to get started. This is item number two B on work session. It's all yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and counsel. I'm here today just to provide you a quick overview of the process that began yesterday related to board and commissions. As y'all know, this is, this is y'all's process, so you should not hear anything that is vastly new from last year. We got some good feedback from you all last year's for some of the changes, so we have carried a lot of that over to this year. So, this is the application timeline. It began yesterday with applications opening up on the eleventh. They will close on September eighth. After that point, that'll be kind of in our hands to prepare all of those applications then to hand off to you all as the council for your review and for some of those boards. You know, you received a lot of applications, so for some of those, you may want to go through a vetting process to kind of cull the list on who you would like to invite in for interviews. Late September and early October is when we will walk through the actual interviews with the selected candidates. November eleventh is when y'all will appoint those new members. And then on the sixteenth is when the orientation will happen for everybody that we're swearing in for this upcoming year. So, that's just a snapshot on just timeline. Underscoring all of that is the marketing campaign throughout the entire process. Hannah and her team will be providing a lot of marketing. So, on the support that they're going to provide, many of these outlets will look very familiar to you. One thing, two pieces that I'd like to point out is the emails to our current and youth and adult volunteers. So, one of the platforms that we leveraged last year to much success was our, it's Better Impact Software, which is what we use to communicate with all of our existing volunteers. And that was a, that was a huge success in terms of getting that, those opportunities out in front of people who are likely to volunteer. The other piece I'd like to highlight is we'll be getting some talking points to you all so that you can leverage your own networks within the community to get this word out to your social networks, because we don't know everybody in Coppell. So, these are the boards that have expiring terms and vacancies. Essentially, everything except for CRDC and the Special Ethics Legal Counsel Review Panel are on this list. That's a mouthful. BOA has an actual vacancy. We will actually be bringing a planning and zoning commission vacancy to you at the upcoming meeting. We have a member who is moving out of Coppell. So, there will actually be two boards with actual vacancies that we'll be filling for this upcoming term. On our youth applications, we have the three boards that have youth advisors, so we're really excited. This will be our second year for all three of those boards to have youth advisors. So, what do you need in order to be a qualified candidate? None of these requirements have changed from last year. The one thing from a process standpoint is the background checks. We will be, that's kind of like a post offer screening. So, once the council decides who you all would like to appoint to those boards, that's the point at which we will run those background checks. It is done by our employee experience team, do a third-party vendor. It's the same screening that we do for pre-employment screenings for employees. From an interview perspective, Mayor Mays will be leading this process from a scheduling and coordination perspective. You all will be getting some communication from him regarding dates. And then the mayor will review that, assign the dates that you all are selecting to kind of, that matrix of matching availability and all of that. After that, we will be notifying, so after the applicant submits their application, they will get a confirmation email that essentially says, thank you. Here are the interview dates, so that just lets them know when the dates for interviews are going to be. It's not a scheduling of my interview. Once we get to the point where you all decide who you would like to bring in, we will send them a second email that says, this is when you will be interviewed, the date and time. We will actually be getting, be beginning the interview process one week earlier than we did last year, and that is due to ICMA. And so, we had to shift a little bit related to that from just the scheduling. We will have two nights with multiple boards interviewing at the same time, and we will schedule those so that they're not the two heaviest boards interviewing at the same time. And as, as in previous years, those interviews will be held on a first-come, first-served basis. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. The one thing I, I do want to highlight, I know the discussion that this council had in November, when you guys went through the process to do your final appointments, one of the recommendations that I heard from you guys was helping folks make sure that they get those confirmation emails, because people get a lot of emails into their email inboxes. Sometimes it goes to spam and junk, and I don't see those things. So, we did add some language on kind of the, the application, like a checkbox. I'm certifying that this is the email address I would like to use. And then we've got a recommendation on, okay, also, please add this email address to your contacts. So, the, the default communication will be the email address. We are also looking at whether we can just, almost, it's like the P N Z, the two hundred feet is what we're required to do. The eight hundred feet is what we like to do. So, we're going to, we are looking at whether the system can send out texts. So, I don't know if we can use the existing system, or we'd have to try something else. But the primary platform for all of the communication is going to be via email, and we've kind of put a couple of things in place, hopefully, to avoid some of the issues that maybe we had last year.
Can you also do, I appreciate all those efforts. Was curious also on like the receipt, the read receipt or whatever, like to, where you know that they have read it, and then you get some sort of confirmation of that.
That is an IT question. I will have to follow up to see if we are able to do that through the system.
Right. Usually do Outlook, yeah, you just click. If you don't get me wrong, I always go around it if I don't want them to know that I read it. That's another story, but they should click it and let us know that they read it. There are people trying to sell me stuff, and I don't need them to know I read their emails.
I'm going to answer, I think you both have to be on the same network Outlook for that to work.
Okay.
But let the IT department answer that one for sure.
Yeah, that's an IT question.
I had Mark, and then, well, I, I think Mark was, was up there.
I had you.
We're behind you.
So, just a question. Why do we require you be an eligible voter? Because doesn't that make non-citizens not eligible to serve on boards and commissions?
Yes, I had the same concern, and I brought this up last year. I was told that the city charter is insisting on that, and I had, I was going to bring that up. I think, given the amount of foreign-born people that we have here, given how long it's taking for H ones to then become green carded citizen, if we really want our residents to be engaged, we need to do something about that.
You're correct. It is, it is included in the charter in terms of what are the requirements for that. So, that would require an amendment, a charter amendment to change.
Is that a referendum vote? We should have had Bob here.
It's getting a little funny.
I'll follow up with you all on process.
All right.
That would be interesting.
Yep.
Thank you for bringing that up.
I'm sorry, let's see, we had Don and then Vijay.
I missed the very first, but it didn't sound like anything's really changing in the process. Is that correct? Is that, was that the, okay.
That is the overarching theme, yes.
You missed a whole bunch.
That's what I was, I'm just confirming that was the case.
Yes, correct.
Pretty much the same. Thank you.
So, to, to his point, you will be getting an email from me asking which ones you want to interview for. And I'm not going to ask you to rank from one to ten. I'm going to ask for the top three, because that's really all that matters anyway. Vijay?
Bijou?
Yeah, so Tracy, one of the surveys city conducted to the residents, asking them, what is the preferred way of communication? On that deck that I saw, thirty-five percent said text message. I don't know if you remember that. So last year, we had a few people miss their interviews because they went to the jenmey or they were not able to attend. When I asked about a text message, the response I received was, "We will look into it." So what I'm hearing from you is, we haven't looked at so far?
I am not sure if that can be the primary with the system that we are currently using. That is correct.
I thought with most carriers, you can basically do the telephone number, and then it's at like A T T dot net, and that hap, that works for multiple carriers, but not all.
And we have, we have a note, text notification system.
Right.
That we use for emergencies and that sort of thing. We use it for utility billing cutoffs and that sort of stuff. So we have something that would just require exporting that data into, so, into the Everbridge. So we're kind of looking to see what, what can be done there.
Brianna?
So I want to put some, I, the, the people who missed it last year, like I'm curious why they missed it, because like, did it go to junk folder, whatever, maybe, because I, I forgot if you did tell us. And I say that because the other part of that is, if we are going to do text message, then, only because I do privacy law, you have to get people to opt in and to let, and to tell you that it's okay to text them, and Jason would know that, Jonathan would know that, sorry. Or I T.
Josh, Josh.
Josh, sorry. I'm thinking about my I T, because I've been on the phone with I T all day. I have locked myself out of every system today. We, we have to make sure that they opt in, I believe, and that we get their okay, and they give us, and then tell us what their preferred. That's why I was looking at the receipt, because I wondered if through Outlook was sending them an email, then we would know, but anyway, I also want to put some responsibility on the person of looking out for this and that we've done everything we can on our end. I just, I just want to be mindful, like, we can go in all different directions, but I don't think we can just text people without getting their okay.
So my understanding on what happened last year is we had one, one individual that I was aware of that did not get his email notice on his interview. If there were others, I, I had not heard if there was more than the one individual that I'm aware of.
Okay, gotcha. And they just, it didn't go to spam or didn't go to?
I think it, I, I don't know where that email went. It was the email we had been using to communicate up to that point.
Gotcha.
What was our understanding of the people who were interviewing on that board, that there had been previous communication via this email? And then whatever, something happened with that particular message. I'm not sure what technically what happened, but that's, that's my recollection.
Remesh?
Thank you, Mayor. On the youth volunteers, if I remember correctly, it's juniors and seniors that are eligible, correct?
No, everything from seventh grade.
Oh, okay, okay. Anecdotally, from some of the groups, I've been hearing that some seniors are not as plugged in, because, you know, they're more distracted with apps and all of this stuff. So if we are having seventh grade and up, I think that that solves the problem.
Well, the challenge with the seniors is they only fulfill half the term if they're, if they're existing seniors now. We appoint in January, and that goes through that calendar year. So that's why we have the, that set at eleventh grade. So yes, understanding that piece of it, that would be the only challenge really that we need to consider around seniors.
Got it.
Don?
Just another thought, and maybe actually get into privacy issues, but can, when the person's being interviewed, can that be posted on the website or anything? Is that a problem, like, so they could go find it, you know, if they wanted to see if they were on the list, or is there a privacy, is there a privacy?
Well, we probably could, so those interviews, first come, first served, we could post when those interviews for smart city board is on this day, this time, interviews for park board are this day, this time, so that at least you would know if I've, if I've been notified that I'm on park board, that I would know when I should show up.
The people who actually.
Put a roster up, right?
Yeah, just a roster of who was going to be interviewed, but maybe they'd be crossing privacy.
Well, we do, we do post as part of the disclaimer, when you make this application, that this is subject to public disclosure, so the information that you are including here, you know that you are.
I just hope that.
Potentially, that this could be disclosed.
It might be a transparent way to at least see who's on the list to be interviewed, I mean, unless we thought that was.
I'm, I'm kind of thinking in the exact same realm that you are, like, trying to figure out how to get people, I, I love that idea. If there was a way that we could put, you know, like, hey, here are the people that have been selected for interviews, I, I think that'd be fantastic. I may be a simple person, alright, but. Why can't, like, if, if we, if we email people and, you know, we don't hear a response for, from them, why can't we just pick up the phone and call them? Or send them a text message from a, like, like, if, the city secretary, this is normally their process, correct?
I hope this is my first and last presentation.
I appreciate that, but, I mean, like, for, for lack of, for lack of better understanding, like, if you don't get an email, like, confirmation by a certain time, why can't the city secretary just pick up the phone and say, "Hey, you've been selected for an interview?" And if they don't get the email and they don't respond to the call, and you send them a text message from a city phone that isn't like a broadcast type of message, I think it's pretty safe to, to say that they're probably not interested in interviewing, like, I, I know it's kind of very back to basics, but.
Well, and I don't know from a process, that may be one of those things that is not in the procedures that I have right here, that I am sure we didn't just send one single thing, because that's not how we, that's not how we operate for anything, so I am sure we didn't just do one.
There's an email problem, and we only send email, why can't we just go on the phone and call them, or just send them a text message? And like.
I, I like the calling, like, just pick up the phone and call, right, like? I'm not trying to put.
There's a lot of calls.
No, 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 I'm just saying, like.
Yeah, but potentially.
This would only be like the people who, like, I, I'm, I'm sensitive to what Bijou said, right, like, like, if somebody did have a technical problem with their email and, you know, like, what, it just feels like sometimes technology is getting in the way of just picking up the phone and calling somebody, and just saying, "Hey, the committee thinks that you'd be really good for an interview. Can you come on in?" And like, I think that this would be a small handful of people, where you would catch most everyone, and I get, like, to your point, there does need to be some sort of responsibility on the other person's side, but I don't want a qualified candidate for a board of commission to get disqualified for a technicality.
And I hear you, and that happened with a, with a job opportunity that I had, where they sent me an email, I never saw it, and had it not been for them calling me and saying, "Hey, you didn't respond to your e, to your email, and I really thought you'd be a great candidate to apply," I would have known.
I don't know, maybe, maybe I'm.
Yeah, we've lost the art of talking.
Maybe I'm, I'm looking at it.
No, I like it.
I think she's got the message.
Yeah, yeah, no, just, I'm just.
I like it, Nevels. So Kevin Nevels would like to volunteer to call everybody.
What I would do is, I would be more than willing to call the people that are for my commission, or like, via interviews, if, if somebody didn't respond, I'd be happy to call them.
I would too.
Pick up that phone?
Yes.
Anything else?
Multi-mode.
Huh?
This could be N H S or volunteer service hours.
Alright, anything else?
Nothing else.
If you have any other questions?
No, sir.
I have one, and I, this is, so you have a group, you're, I don't know, doing Parks and Rec or Planning and Zoning, and you have thirty-five candidates for three positions. Do you interview all thirty-five, or do you pre-screen down? I just want to, I just want to get it out so everybody understands.
Pre-screen.
Pre-screen.
Almost not to everybody.
So last year, which was my first time, I was with Don and Kevin on two different things, we decided to invite everyone.
But that was your choice?
Yeah.
I would, we, we didn't have thirty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know the board that we served on, it was a, a smaller camp, so we just figured, hey.
I mean, I understand if you have three or four, but, you know, like, sometimes you do have twenty.
We had fifteen or something.
You're being generous there.
Okay, so the answer is, you don't have to interview everybody if you don't want to?
It's actually a little bit of a disservice if you, especially if there's incumbents or you, you think there's, it wastes a lot of time for, for, on the other side also for someone, you know, if they really, there's just too many people to fill two minutes, two huge slots.
We do interview the incumbents. Okay.
We do.
Yes, we do interview incumbents. That's, that's changed over the years, back and forth, but we do interview the incumbents.
Yes, it has changed.
Yes. Because it should, it should not, it should not be an automatic, just because you have served that.
Bob and Halak and I got in trouble over that one. Alright, anything else? Alright, thank you very much. We'll go adjourn the meeting. Good evening. Once again, we have recessed from work session. The time is nine eleven. We're reconvening into the Copel City Council, and therefore, there being no further business before this council, we are adjourned at nine eleven P M.